Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. This is the County Employees Retirement System regular quarterly meeting of the Board of Trustees. We are at December the 4th, 2023. Appreciate everyone attending this afternoon and all of our listeners out there in the live streaming land. Mr. Bronco, could you read our opening statement, please, sir?
Sure. This is a regular meeting of the County Employees Retirement Systems Board of Trustees. This meeting is being broadcast via video teleconference pursuant to KRS 61826 and may be viewed by the public at the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority offices located at 1260 Louisville Road in Frankfurt, Kentucky. It is also being broadcast live via Facebook. I ask if you are speaking and are not appearing by video, please identify yourself before talking. In the event the video or audio broadcast is interrupted, we will attempt to reestablish a connection. If a connection cannot be reestablished within 30 minutes, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled to a later date.
Thank you so much. Ms. Rankin, could you do roll call, please, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Pendergrass?
Here.
Dr. Carver?
Here.
Mr. Cheatham?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
I'm here.
Mr. Volkerson?
Here.
Dr. Hackbart?
Here.
Dr. Milkman? Mr. O'Meara?
Here.
And Mr. Powell?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am. No public comment.
Next item on our agenda. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Next item on our agenda will be the approval of minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve our minutes of November the 8th?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Rankin, did you get that second? I didn't recognize the voice. Who made the second?
I did, and so did Dr. Dr. Hackbart.
Okay, Dr. Hackbart and Bill O'Meara. I have a joint second of that motion. Thank you so much, gentlemen. I appreciate your exuberance.
I'll flip a coin.
Any questions, edits, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from November the 8th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Mr. O'Meara, I think you had a request.
I do. Thank you. Today, we have a guest from the Auditor of Public Accounts, Mr. Adam Gordon, who's here to present the draft 2023 Act for. It's item number eight on our agenda, and I would like to request that he be able to go next.
So do you have a motion?
I have a motion to move item number eight underneath the approval of minutes.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second for that agenda adjustment?
A second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foster. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Mr. O'Meara, I'll give the mic back to you to lead us into the committee report, please, sir.
Thank you. At the KPPA Audit Committee Meeting, Mr. Gordon made the presentation about the 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, wanted to invite him to give us a recap. Then he will actually give the actual presentation to the KPPA Board for acceptance later this week, I think.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. O'Meara. So again, my name is Adam Gordon. I'm from the Auditor of Public Accounts office, and I am the auditor in charge of the KPPA Physical Year 23 Audit. Linda Hinton, who is the Audit Manager, is also on the call as well. So as you may know, Kentucky revised statutes require that the APA perform this audit every five years. So our last audit was in Physical Year 18. And so this year, we audited the Physical Year 2023 Financial Report. Management is still responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. In our engagement letter, we engaged with management to perform the audit. So in that engagement letter, we, to perform the audit, we provide an opinion, which is the Government Auditing Standards or Yellow Book Letter for the inclusion of the Act for. Our end-of-field work date for that letter is November 27th, the date of the Audit Committee Meeting that was last week. We will provide KPPA management the final version of those letters after the December 6th meeting, the full KPPA Board meeting on Wednesday. So just so you all know, for those letters, we only expect any formatting changes to be made on those. Anything else may extend our end-of-field work date. So we have been working with management to see what new changes will be made, and so far, it's all been formatting. Once the final version is presented to KPPA Board Meeting on Wednesday, we're going to do a review. And then, once we don't see any significant changes, we'll email management to authorize the release and provide those final letters. So KPPA is a component unit of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. So the audit of KPPA's Act for must be finalized before the release of the Commonwealth's Act for, which is normally the middle of December. So hopefully, if it's released this week, we'll be right on time with that. So Sheri, on page 276, I believe, of the materials, should be the Those Charged with Governance letter. So we are required to communicate with you all certain topics, including a description of our responsibilities, the plan's scope, which is expressing an opinion on the financial statements, significant accounting practices, our estimates, misstatements, difficulties encountered, and findings or other issues. We will be emailing the final version of this letter to the Chair of the KPPA Audit Committee and the Chair of the KPPA Board, who will then be responsible for distributing it to the other board members. But just to preview, we did not note any unusual matters in this letter, so. All right, so for our opinion on page 79. So here is our draft opinion, and again, we'll provide the final one on Wednesday. But we are issuing an unmodified, or what we call a clean, opinion. Our opinion letter will include just a couple unusual paragraphs compared to the prior year. So one will be an emphasis on matter paragraph regarding the component units of the Commonwealth, just so we emphasize that we're giving an opinion on KPPA, not the Commonwealth of Kentucky. And then we also have a paragraph referring to the 2022 audit being audited by another auditor, just because we have to do this every five years. So we just want to reiterate that we hadn't, just to explain that that other information is being presented as comparative information in the report. And then, if you want to go to page 92, that's the start of the financial statements themselves. And since this is the CERS Board Meeting, I'll go ahead and just kind of do a general highlight of CERS funds, but I'll defer anything else to to management on that. But the total fiduciary net position for both CERS hazardous and non-hazardous is 11.8 billion for pensions, and that is roughly about a $1 billion increase for pension this year. The total investments for pension was roughly $1 billion. And then the net investment income increased about $1.8 billion for pensions compared to the net investment loss of last year. And then total benefits increased by $50 million. And then the pension contributions remained relatively the same this year with just a very small increase for 2023. And then for insurance, for the total fiduciary net position is $400 million for insurance. Total investments for insurance is about $500 million. Net investment income increased by $700 million for insurance compared to net investment loss last year. And I believe, overall, a majority of the total investments, kind of that increase was related to public equities this year. All right, next, we'll go to some of the, some items noted on page 282. So this is where we have our findings. So we have three classes of findings. We have material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, and control deficiencies. So we, as the auditors, determine what classification to put these findings. Control deficiencies are not reported in the audit report. Only material weaknesses and significant deficiencies are reported. And so for 2023, we had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies noted in our audit report. So the control deficiencies, we appear in a management letter that we send normally only to KPPA management. And at their request, they wanted to present these two items in the board meeting. So the first item that we have relates to investment reconciliations. So essentially, when we were reviewing the reconciliations of the custodial bank in the accounting information systems, we just noted an issue where it was difficult to see when the reconciliation was being performed or reviewed. So we did recommend that those individuals kind of improve those procedures and kind of document, kind of like, the date of when it was being performed. And when I brought those issues to them, they were aware of it and had already addressed that for Physical Year 24. So they were aware of the issue and were able to address that even before I kind of brought it up. So but since we were auditing 2023, that's why we do have it documented in this case for the management letter. I think just a couple pages down is the the second item noted. This one is related to healthcare premium wires. So what we were doing, we were reviewing transfers for premium subsidy payments to Humana.
Excuse me, just a second. Sheri, we need to go one. There you go. Thank you.
I think it starts on 284, if that helps. This one may be still related to the first finding. Maybe the next page. There we go. Okay, so these were related to healthcare premium wires. So essentially, we were reviewing the the payments to Humana and Department of Employee Insurance for those healthcare premium subsidies. And essentially, what we had found, that some of the documentation wasn't consistent to what the payments were actually being made. But and there were just a few items, if you scroll down just a little bit on the bullet points there. Those were all the items that we had noted. But all in all, the total kind of misstatement that we found ended up just being about $30 overall. So so really, the issue was just that documentation wasn't as clear. And we brought that attention to those individuals, and they have since, are currently working on updating those procedures to make sure that the supporting documentation is consistent and clear. And then with that, that's all I have. I just want to lastly say that I appreciate KPPA's management and staff. Every single one of them were very helpful with any questions we have, and they they did their due diligence and brought us anything that may potentially be an issue. And as we know, we didn't see anything significant to note in the audit report. So but again, we greatly appreciate their cooperation, and if you have any questions for me, feel free. Thank you all.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Gordon? I did want to thank Mike Lamb and his team for an audit well done. Good job working on this one in terms of the management letter recommendations. These are fairly simple to fix, so I think we're making some some good progress here. And thank you, Mr. Gordon and your team, for getting this audit done in a cost-effective manner. We appreciate your input. All right. Next on our agenda are some actuarial issues. At our last meeting, we accepted the 2023 valuation pending a revision for some revenues that were accrued from a late payment. Sheri, if you'll go on to the next page. Yes, right there. We'll start there. And then, at this point, I'll ask Mr. White to give us a quick review of the changes after they reran the valuation. They will have final reports once the boards have all adopted the, or accepted the the 2023 valuations. And the full valuation will be posted on the KPPA website for anyone that wants to dive into those deals. So at this point, I'll ask Mr. White to give us an executive summary review, please, sir.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Benny. Members of the board, as she noted, we, from the time that we first presented results, there was there was pending updates to be made. We've made those updates. There's draft reports that are updated after, and they're going to be, they're going to be finalized, subject to approval today. So with that, I'll actually turn it over to Janie to go over the highlights of, just a summary of how, what changed and how far did it change?
Thanks, Dani. Sheri, I'm actually going to have you go to page 16 of the board books, if you don't mind. Yes. As the board remembers, we did go through this whole presentation last time we were here in November. So I'm not going to go through the whole presentation. I'm just going to highlight the employer contribution rates today and show you what changed from the last time we are here. As Dani noted, we did have a slight change in our assets, where we did have additional employer contributions reported. So ultimately, what this did is it did lower our employer contribution requirements, the biggest impact on our hazardous fund. So you can see here, for the non-hazardous funds, the employer contribution rate, we're showing 19.71%. That's down from 19.75%, which we showed you when we were back in November. And then on the hazardous fund, we're showing 38.61%. That's down from 38.95%. That's the number we showed you back in November. So again, these are the employer contribution rates that we're bringing to the board today that are to go into effect July 1st, 2024, or Fiscal Year 2025. So that's really all I have, but I welcome any additional questions, comments that the board has regarding the valuation today.
Any questions for our GRS team? At this point, I would entertain a motion to adopt the 2023 employer contribution rates. For non-hazardous, that recommended actuarial rate is 19.71%. And for the hazardous plan, that is 38.61%. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cheatham. Any questions about those two rates? As Ms. Shaw indicated, they will go into effect July 1st, 2024. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have the contribution rates completed. The next item on our actuarial issues are the annuity conversion and service purchase rates. Sheri, if you could go to page 41 to start. There was some confusion between our meeting and the KRS meeting. So they have not yet adopted a recommendation. And they asked for additional information. And this schedule that you see here on page 41 is part of an additional analysis that GRS did for us. So I'll ask Ms. Shaw to walk us through these schedules.
Absolutely. I know we've talked about this quite a bit with the board, but I will just do a brief overview of kind of what we're talking about today as far as our administrative factors. So as the board knows, we adopted the investment return assumption for the actuarial valuation back in May. So across all of the plans, for all the pension plans, for the KPPA plans, that ranges from 5 and 1/4 to 6.5%. That's what the, sorry, that's what the C-Board adopted. So what we're talking about today, however, is we're talking about the administrative factor assumption. So the administrative factors are used for a variety of reasons. They're used to create the joint and survivor functions. They're used for service purchases, and they're also used to annuitize the cash balance accounts for your Tier 3 members. And so the cash balance, the Tier 3 annuitization for the cash balance accounts is kind of what we're going to be focusing on today. So generally, when we talk about your administrative factors, we generally think of those as being actuarially equivalent to your valuation. So generally, those will be based on the same valuation assumptions, or the same assumptions as your valuation. The issue that we run into today is that the discount rates across all of the pension plans are different. Again, what we're saying is we're ranging from 5 and 1/4 to 6.5%. It remains GRS's recommendation, same as it was back when we did these administrative factors, that we use one discount rate for the administrative factors for two reasons. One of that being that when we have a member in the K non-hazardous plan and the C non-hazardous plan, so that when they want to annuitize their cash balance account, if they have the same cash balance account and you annuitize that, you're getting the same benefit, so that those factors aren't used, aren't different for each member. The second being just an administrative complexity of using different discount rates for each plan. But ultimately, this is a policy decision, and ultimately, that's a decision for the board. So right now, the discount rate assumption for the administrative factors is 5 and 1/4. So we're going to start here on our first exhibit here today. So right now, you'll see there's a very small, slight impact if we were to keep the discount rate assumption at 5 and 1/4. And the only difference here you're seeing is that mortality assumption that we changed back in May. So you can see this is a very, very small impact. We didn't change that mortality assumption very much. In fact, if you were to keep the discount rate assumption at 5 and 1/4, we also believe it would be reasonable to just keep the administrative factors where they're at today. So i.e. no change. If we go to the next exhibit here, so this is looking at a discount rate assumption of 5.875% for all of the administrative factors. So that's just in the middle of 5 and 1/4 and 6 and 1/2%. And so if we look here at the C non-hazardous, the C non-hazardous plan, this is the impact that it will have on your actual valuation results. So when we do your valuation results, we actually use the actual cash balance. We use the actual administrative factors in our valuation to convert your cash balance annuities, those future cash balance accounts to annuities. We use those actual factors in our valuation. So if we were to increase the discount rate for those administrative factors, that means higher projected Tier 3 benefits. What that also means is that each plan is also taking on a higher investment return risk. So that's kind of the trade-off there that we're talking about. So for the non-hazardous plan, if we have those higher projected Tier 3 benefits, that's about $11 million increase in our unfunded liability and about 12 basis points on our contribution rate. Now, I do want to put this increase in your unfunded liability in perspective. If we look at the experience study that we did, that experience study decreased your unfunded liability by $906 million. So those collective assumption changes decreased your unfunded liability by $906 million. So this $11 million increase, you really should just think of that as offsetting that $906 million decrease that we saw. And then again, just for completeness again, on the upper limit, we see Exhibit 3 here on the next slide, with the discount rate of 6.5% for the non-hazardous plan, about a $28 million increase in the unfunded liability and 29 basis points on your employer contribution rate. And I will open it up for questions and discussion.
Any questions on these schedules? Sheri, if you could take us back to page 39. When the Actuarial Committee discussed this, let's see, I'm sorry, back to, go to the, I'm sorry. Go back to the the Actuarial Committee memo. I didn't write that page number down. I'm sorry.
Number one.
Go back. Yeah, go back to the beginning of this tab, Sherry. Yes, right there. All right. The actuarial committee voted to use the 5.875% as a single rate that would be used by all the plans administered. Some of the KRS trustees asked for additional information and they did not take a vote. So we don't have confirmation that they have agreed to this yet. But that was the recommendation from our actuarial committee. I'm not going to say a whole lot, except that in my personal opinion, a single rate increases risk for one plan and it decreases benefits for another plan. So personally, I don't think that the single rate works very well. But that may, I may be the only one that thinks that. Do I have a motion for the board to make a recommendation to KRS for a rate?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to be adopted a compromise rate of 5.875%.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fulkerson. Any questions about this issue?
Did he say eight points, 5.875%? I couldn't hear.
I'm sorry, yes, 5.875, which is the rate that is halfway between the five and a quarter and the six and a half.
Was the recommendation of the actuarial committee correct?
Yes, that was the recommendation of the committee. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of the motion to use a single rate of 5.875, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? An aye pose? And I believe the ayes have it, so we have a single rate recommendation to the KRS board. All right, next item on our agenda is the finance committee report. Mr. O'Meara, you have the mic.
Yes, thank you. And I believe we're on page 44. We met on November 16th and we do have two things to recommend to the board. One was hazard duty request and the other was new agency participations. Is Mr. Surratt here to present?
Yes, I am here.
All right. Would you want to walk us through these, please?
All right. As you can see, we had a lot of hazardous duty requests. Many of these agencies have advised us that they are applying for hazardous duty coverage as a recruitment and a recruiting tool. All of these positions are police, fire, EMT, or paramedic positions. CRS hazardous statutes have been included. And also, the employers did submit all the position questionnaires and job descriptions. The CRS Finance Committee did review and approve these positions to be presented in front of the Board of Trustees for final approval.
And so I make a motion that we approve the hazardous duty request as presented.
Thank you, Mr. O'Meara. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cheatham. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, back to you, Mr. O'Meara.
All right, next we have new agencies that have applied. Mr. Surratt.
Okay. We had two new agencies request participation. Hayden Leslie County Water District and Springfield, Washington County 911 Dispatch. They both have provided the board minutes, resolution to participate, budget, and also submitted their health insurance contract. In addition, they have completed their three-month trial period with no issues. Therefore, we are requesting the board to approve these agencies to be participating in the systems.
And so I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation to add Hayden Leslie County Water District and Springfield, Washington County 911 Dispatch. So moved.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Powell, for the second. Any questions on this issue? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
All right, and I want to thank staff for being swamped with recommendations doing all the review so that we could have these presented to the board today. Next was going over our year-to-date financials and reports. Mr. Lamb, would you walk us through those, please?
Yes, sir. Perfect. Near the bottom there, Sherry, perfect. On page 50, you'll see our fiduciary net income for the C plans at the end of quarter one is $11.6 billion. That's up 11.26% from the quarter one of prior year of $10.5 billion. That's $1.1 billion more. That's driven by the overall increase in investments at fair value, which increased 10.55% when you compare quarter to quarter. And specifically in the public equities line item, which increased 20.18% or 937 million. If we move down to page 51, despite this increase in the net position year over year, you'll see near the bottom that we actually lost $206 million from June 30 to 930. That's our net decrease in fiduciary net position for the first quarter. The good news is that the prior year's first quarter, we lost $345 million. So so far, this year, we're doing better than we started off last year. At the top of this page, you can see that the C plans received $289.6 million in total contributions. And near the bottom, you'll see that we paid out $329.4 million in benefits, refunds, and admin expenses. That's a $39.8 million cash flow loss. The prior year's quarter one was a $31.1 million cash flow loss. The net investment loss for the quarter, which is in the middle of the page, is $166 million compared to a net investment loss of $314 million in the first quarter of the prior year. If we now follow this through down to the contribution reports for the pension funds on page 52, you'll see that that middle line, net contributions for the non-hazardous plan was .6 million. And for the hazardous plans was $22.4 million. And that's for quarter one. If we take out the net investment income, you'll see that the bottom there, that the cash flow again is a negative $45.7 million as well as a positive $6 million for the hazardous fund. So the non-haz plan had an increase in inflows from all areas. And they totaled $244.8 million, which is $12.5 million higher than the quarter one last year. And most notably in the employer contributions that increased the most, 5.6 million. The haz plan had an overall decrease of $500,000 with the largest line item being the employer contribution going down 2.2 million. The outflows for both of these plans were higher than the prior year related to more benefit payments and refunds issued. The unrealized gains, which is most of the negative line item there right near the bottom, for both the non-haz and the haz plan, they were negative $176.8 million and $62.6 million respectively. But they were not as bad as the prior year's first quarter unrealized gains, which were $277 million and $95.7 million respectively. That's the pension statements, and I'm going to jump to the insurance statements unless I have questions. So near the bottom of page 53, you'll see the fiduciary net position for the C plans at the end of quarter one are $4.8 billion, which is up 11.09% compared to the prior year. This is $480 million higher and is also driven by the increase in investments at fair value, which are 9.3% higher than they were one year ago. And again, specifically in the public equities investment asset class, which is up 18.32%. If we page down to page 54, again, despite this increase in the fiduciary net position year over year, if we just look at the first quarter results, you can see near the bottom there that we lost $92.6 million in the first quarter. But in the prior year's first quarter, we lost $155 million. So again, doing a little bit better as we start the fiscal year than we did last year. We did receive $26 million in contributions and paid out $52 million, mostly in healthcare premiums or subsidies. That's a $26 million cash flow loss. And then in the middle of the page, the net investment loss for the quarter is 67 or 66.5 million. The prior year quarter one net investment loss was 137 million. And if we page down to the contribution reports for insurance, the C non-haz plan showed a positive net contribution of 6.3. The C hazardous plan shows a negative net contribution of 7.9 million. And again, this is just for the first quarter. If we do take out the net investment income of 16.9 and 7.6, you'll see that the bottom chart has cash flow net contributions are negative 10.6 million and negative 15.5 million. The non-haz insurance has $21.8 million less in employer contributions, offset by an increase in the Humana gain share of 10.4 million. And the hazardous plan has $7.6 million less in employer contributions, offset by an increase of 1.6 million in the Humana gain share.
We might ought to point out here, too, that the main reason for the decrease in the employer contributions is the lower contribution rate because the insurance plans are funded at amounts higher than 100%. So we expected this decline.
That's correct. Thank you, Ms. Penegras. Any questions on those statements? I think the next page is the invoices that are open and late. So again, this page here shows that our open invoices at 9:30 are $3.1 million. That's 4% less than they were at 6:30. The lower half of that page shows the top 10 employers with open invoices. And we've started putting a little three asterisks there. And it says on the sheet that it indicates invoices in litigation. And I need to correct that statement a little bit. What we meant to say, and what we will correct on the next board meeting, is this indicates that the invoices have been referred to legal. Not all of them are in litigation. Some of them are being pursued for collection in other manners, in other ways besides litigation. But they are all in the hands of our legal department. Some are in litigation, some are not. So I wanted to point that out. Most of those employers, as you note, have been the same ones for the past several quarters for a lot of those legal reasons. The next page is the penalty invoices that have been issued over the quarter. So we had 17 that were waived for a total of $17,000. And you can see the comments on the right as to why they were waived. Some of them don't even have employees to report. So that's why they were late and it doesn't make sense to charge them the minimum charge of $1,000 for that. We did have 33 penalty invoices that were created for a total of $41,413. And 31 invoices were paid during the quarter. 31 penalty invoices were paid and that totaled $519,000. That's what I have on penalty invoices. And then I think the next one, we're going to talk about admin budget.
On this one here, I had a couple of questions. I noticed that some of the towns were, it's probably a couple of pages back there, Sherry, were no employees. And I don't remember seeing that previously. Is that a new category? Yeah, that's the one page right there. Thank you, Sherry. It says no full-time employees with no contributions.
Go ahead, Connie. I see, I think she's waiting to speak.
Yes, that is employee employers that do not have any full-time employees. They have a part-time employee. And if I'm not mistaken, I think it was one, maybe two, that were behind. And in completing their reports and their summary reports, they have no contribution. And so we have done that in the past. We have not allowed them, we have not had them pay their penalty invoices when they owe us no contributions.
Yeah, okay, I just didn't remember ever seeing that many listed before.
It was, I think, one employer in particular, maybe another one. But specifically one.
Had several invoices?
Yes, that they did not know to pay. And so when they did it, when they completed the transactions and filled in their reports and everything, it kicks out a penalty invoice because it was late.
Right, that makes sense now. That's it. It was just one, maybe two employers and it was just several invoices covering a period of time. Okay, that cleared it up for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Thank you, Mr. Powell. So what I've done in this board meeting, and I'm going to do it in the other board meetings, and this is just a suggestion that I'm making, this is the summarized admin budget and not the detailed one. And I would propose that going forward, this is what I present and talk to. However, I would also include the detailed admin budget that you're used to seeing in the appendix going forward. Again, this is just a suggestion. Things that swing are significantly moved within the admin budget, I would disclose here as well. And I would be happy to take any questions from the detailed budget if the trustees reviewed that prior to the meeting and had questions. So for this particular chart, how I would explain this would not be any different than the normal admin budget, and I will do that now. So if you, the first line item here is personnel. And so far, we spent $8.5 million, which is 75% or only 25% of the annual budget. So we're right online with that. And then I would move down to the legal contracts line, and you would see that we've only spent $169,000, which is only 85 or 86% of the total budget. So we're actually running better than budget. However, the legal contracts, as you know, fluctuate quite a bit during the year. And I did want to point out that within this line item, there's a more detailed line item, which is the legal hearing officers. And we have already spent like 33% of that budget so far this year. That one was over budget last year, if you recall. We do have a lot of backlog cases that require legal hearings. Currently, we only have three hearing officers and they are staying very busy with that backlog. We did increase the budget specifically to that line item for hearing officers. And we still anticipate staying within the new budget, but it was just a little bit higher for the first quarter, higher than the 25% that you would expect. So that's how I would explain that one. The auditing line item you see is zero. And we just have not yet been billed by the APA for all of the work that they've done on the audit so far. And as you can see, Adam presented earlier, and we're likely to get billed shortly for all of their work. The other personnel line item is at $83,000. That includes a sub-line item called miscellaneous. And that's currently at $74,000 of that $83,000. And it does include $66,000 in payments to provalent for our strategic plan. So the total personnel, that first gray line item is, you know, $9 million spent, which is 76.65%, or only 24% of the budget. We have 76 left to spend. So we're kind of right online for the first quarter. And then the operational subtotal, the second gray line, we spent 1.1 million, which is only, you know, we still have 83% left to spend. There is a miscellaneous line item within the detail, and that includes $5,300 in furniture moves as well as $8,700 from the personnel cabinet for their annual board assessments. I didn't notice any other line items that appeared out of whack for the first quarter besides the ones that I've talked to. Sherry, if you do want to page down a page or two, you'll see the detail of the budget. Sheri, if you do want to page down a page or two, you'll see the detail of the budget um that has always been presented. And um, so I just, I just kind of summarized it to see if that would be something that the trustees would um like to see in the future. Or if they still want to see the two full pages in the detail, we can still do that.
I certainly like this approach because it keeps us focused on some major categories. And if you give us the highlights for significant issues with that summary, then I think we can uh pick that up. And then if the detail is in the um appendices, then we can go get that detailed information easy enough. Uh, I kind of lean on our budget working group to keep tabs on uh the budget analysis. I would like to Sheri to go back up to his summary. Yeah, page sixty. We've got an increase in the personnel line item from twenty twenty, from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four. How much of that increase is the employee raise that was uh given to state employees this year?
Uh, so Ms. Penegras, I didn't absolutely break that down to determine that. But I would um just based on the headcount that's remained somewhat constant, I'd say most of that increase is related to the raise.
Okay, great. Thank you. Did anybody else have any questions or comments on his uh summary proposal? Uh, go ahead, Mr. O'Meara, but you'll need to unmute.
Mr. Lamb talked to me about this approach and I thought that it was very, had positives and we should present it for comments today. I actually like it uh with the appendices there for the detail for when we want to, to parse into uh the weeds. But, but I, I preferred this approach and just uh thought it was a great suggestion he brought forward.
Mr. Cheatham, you had a question, comment?
Just a little clarification, Mike. Are you talking about this approach for the SERs board meeting? Or are you also anticipating this approach with the finance committee meeting?
You know, I, my intent uh was to do it for both. But if, if you want the detail in the finance committee meeting, um, that makes sense. Um, and then summarize it up to this C meeting. Um, I, I plan to present this at the K meeting, K meeting and the K meeting as well as the K P P A meeting. Uh, but being that you see this admin budget twice within the C committee meetings, uh, I'm, I'm open to however you guys want to do that.
I would, I, I don't mind the summary. I, I don't like the idea of having to go search through the appendix to find the, the detail pages. If you want to continue to present them directly behind your summary, that, that's fine. Board books is hard, board books is hard enough to navigate when you're reviewing things, much less during a meeting.
I agree with Lyle on that one. I, I like the overview, but I also sometimes like to dig into the meat of it and not so much have to go search for it, just include it as additional information within that same report.
I think that makes sense. I think this is represents sort of an executive summary. And then the details immediately following that makes a lot of sense. And I think the point about trying to follow your way through the board book, this would be a lot simpler to have them right next to each other.
Okay. I would also.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, back to you, Mr. Lamb.
Uh, Sheri, if you want to page down to the bottom of the detail, I would still include the um, the breakdown of the administrative costs and how they get spread among the five pension plans uh based on the hybrid percentage. Up one more, yeah, that chart I, I would probably put up near the summary. Just so you can see the breakdown uh related to your plans. And then um, if you page down again, I will still continue to show the JP Morgan Chase fees as well as the hard interest earned. And uh, I, I still owe the trustees quite a bit of information related to the JP Morgan accounts. And I'm, I am making progress, I promise. Um, the fees that are getting charged on a monthly basis, uh, you can kind of see them for July, August and September. Uh, they are based on the uh contract that the Commonwealth has with JP Morgan Chase. There is a list of fees that, I mean, it's a whole chart that ranges from a monthly account fee to, you know, a penny per transaction related to ACH, et cetera, et cetera. The historically over the last eighteen months, which I've been analyzing, fees range between seven and eight thousand dollars a month uh for all twelve accounts that we have at JP Morgan Chase. In addition to that, we were being charged, there was two ways we could pay for those fees. Uh, the way that was being done was through an earnings credit process, which basically took the balance in those accounts, uh, gave us an interest credit related to that balance that was then offset against those fees. If the earnings credit was higher than the fees, uh, there was a wash, there was no fees and there was no interest applied to our accounts. If the fees were higher than the interest, so when the interest became, uh, the interest rate was very low, uh, we had some fees that weren't being covered by that earnings credit. And then we started getting charged fees. And that's what brought that whole question up a couple of years ago as to why are we getting charged fees? We haven't been charged fees in the past. And so we started looking at these accounts. We have now converted all of the accounts away from that method. So the second way we can pay for fees is we can earn hard interest on the balance in the Chase accounts. And that bottom chart shows you the interest that we've earned on those accounts for those months. So in July, thirty six thousand dollars, August, thirty six thousand, September, forty four thousand. And then the fees will now get billed to us, they're, they're tracked monthly. Uh, and they'll get billed to us at the end of the year. So we anticipate if our fees remain seven, eight thousand dollars a month, you know, that'll be about a hundred thousand in fees. But we're making about a hundred thousand in interest. The interest for hard interest earned is har- is higher than it was for the earnings credit piece. Um, it kind of flows and fluctuates with the market. So um, as part of my analysis, I'm also looking at the monthly balance in these accounts, trying to determine what's optimal, what's necessary, where we can make improvements. It's just taken me quite a bit of time to get through all thirteen of those accounts over like the last eighteen months or so and, and, and do that. But um, I wanted to give you that update in this meeting today.
Thank you, Mike. If there aren't any other questions, that's the, the end of the finance report.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Meara. Next item on our agenda is the investment committee report from Dr. Hackford. I'll give the mic to you, please, sir.
Thank you, Betty. I would like to move everyone to page three twenty one in the board book, which has a summary report from the investment committee. The county employees investment committee met on November twenty eighth. And the material as presented here was a result of that meeting. First of all, there were no decisions made or approved that required ratification by the full C E R S committee. Basically, the majority of the meeting was basically update and information. There were two reports. One was the first quarter report for fiscal two thousand and four, twenty four. It was given by Steve Wyler. And then there was a combined report presented by Steve and the consultant, Bullsher, on the update of the uh asset allocation study that's underway. And basically draft has been completed. Basically, in Steve's report, just a couple of highlights and I'll turn it over to Steve, indicated the first quarter of fiscal twenty four was somewhat difficult, particularly in terms of the public equity portfolio component part, as well as high yield bonds. And they also began to rebalance the fixed income component of the overall portfolio. Steve also indicated they're considering moving some more of the fixed assets in, in-house for, for management. And we talked considerably about the capacity that we have in our staff and their ability to uh carry on additional responsibilities. And this topic that we're going to be looking at as we move forward. Basically, there was a general approval of the idea of moving more fixed income assets into, into this, in-house for management. But we want to make sure that we're, the staff has the resources and the capability to do so. And, and we've been talking about that as we move in the future. The second part of the afternoon's report basically focused on, as I indicated, the asset uh allocation study. Uh, this is a study that's been done periodically. Last asset liability study was done about, typically they're done about every three to five years. And the last one was done in two thousand and twenty. Uh, the report was very comprehensive and informative, generated a lot of discussion. And they also provided two possible options as we move forward in asset allocations that we're considering. But basically, at the end of the meeting, we decided let's think about this a little bit more. And uh, we'll bring it back up in January for basically hopefully a decision. Uh, but we do, are taking that, some possible changes in the asset allocation seriously and trying to take in as many factors and considerations as possible in making that decision. Because that is the major decision that we make as an investment committee. And also, as we refer those recommendations to the full committee, it's a major decision for the entire C E R S board. So we want to do that deliberately and in a very informed basis. We may also have some additional information coming forward uh to all of you so that you have a full understanding. If there is an allocation adjustment, I want to make sure you understand the rationale and logic for the asset allocation adjustment and the documentation of the reasons for that. So that's something that we'll be looking forward to uh in our January meeting. So with those brief introductory comments, I'd like to turn the program over to Steve for his report on the first quarter of fiscal twenty twenty four. Steve?
Good afternoon. Uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, Dr. Hackbark did a great job of giving you uh the, an overview of the investment committee meeting. Sheri, if you could go to page three twenty six, please. Um, I wanted to very briefly cover the highlights from the first quarter. Obviously, that was an eon ago in, in market terms. Um, but I also wanted to provide a very brief update on the first two months of the second quarter of fiscal twenty twenty four. Uh, as Dr. Hackbark mentioned, markets really struggled for direction in the first quarter as they faced a multitude of headwinds resulting in simultaneous declines in equities and bonds, primarily driven by markets recalibrating uh to the likelihood of US interest rates remaining higher for longer. As we can see, US public equities had their worst month of the year in September, were down almost five percent uh and ended the quarter down three percent. Global equities were down almost four percent for the quarter. The yield for the US ten year benchmark rose by seventy three basis points during the quarter to its highest level since two thousand and seven, uh, driven by fifty nine basis point rise in real yields, which resulted in core fixed income declining three point two percent during the quarter. Again, typically we view core fixed incomes, that ballast, the safe harbor uh in volatile times. Uh, and it was unable to perform that uh during the quarter. High yield and levered loans fared better, uh, partially due to their shorter duration with bonds down only forty six basis points during the quarter and loans gating three point one percent. Page three forty four, please, Sheri. Uh, for the quarter, the portfolios performed in line with expectations and consistent with their benchmarks, given the turbulence in the markets. Uh, performance for the quarter ranged from minus one hundred and ninety three to minus two hundred and three basis points, while the benchmark returned minus one hundred and seventy five basis points for the quarter. Markets continued to struggle in October. Performance was just finalized today and should be going out tomorrow. Uh, and all of the portfolios were down approximately a hundred and ninety basis points for the month of October. Turn the page to November and we've seen a tremendous relief rally across financial assets. Markets have embraced both the presumptive end of Fed tightening, uh, along with the expectations of a Fed pivot, combined with positive seasonality. Looking at a traditional sixty forty portfolio was up almost a little over seven percent in November. And that's the third best month, that's, you know, what we typically benchmark as a balanced portfolio. That was the third best month for a balanced strategy since before the great financial crisis. Markets across the board have participated in this rally with global equities up nine percent. Uh, core and high yield bonds were both up four hundred and fifty basis points during the month. And while November performance uh is very preliminary, uh, given that we're on the fourth of, of December here, portfolios look to be up about five percent for the month of November. Uh, so uh, much of an offset to what we saw in the first month of the fiscal year. Sheri, page three fifty nine, please. All of the portfolios continue to produce strong risk adjusted performance as we come to expect compared to the Wilshire peer universe. Longer term performance for all of the portfolios is in or near top decile, while risk is in the lowest decile for all time periods across all portfolios. Page three eighty eight, please. Uh, we're in the process of doing a comprehensive review and reconciliation of the rules and restrictions um in the BNY outsourced compliance module. Uh, we've utilized that for daily testing of the portfolios and to ensure all appropriate statutes, IPS and guideline restrictions are being coded and tested. Uh, as of the end of September, there were no compliance violations to reports. And just recently, we posted the very first proxy voting report to the website as required by statute. So we're happy that took a lot of work. And Joe Gilbert did a great job getting all of our managers across the line. So all of the proxies uh that were entitled to vote are being voted in accordance with the C E R S proxy policy. And the first report was posted to the website. Uh, as Dr. Hackbark mentioned, the majority of the meeting of the investment committee meeting was spent on the asset liability and asset allocation work that we've been doing with Wilshire. It was a robust, a very good discussion. As you mentioned, we, we do this periodically, both um, you know, uh, from a, from a timeliness standpoint, as well as when there are material changes in markets. And as we've seen with capital market assumptions, uh, since the last time we, we did this project, there's been significant changes in assumptions, both from a risk and return uh across asset classes, which the, the largest driver has been predominantly the, the rise in yields. As we're all, as we all know, we came from not too long ago, a, a zero interest rate world to a world where anything with a yield component to it um is relatively attractive at the current time. Uh, that's materially changed the outlook for expected performance for those asset classes. Uh, and if we look at what the, the efficient frontier modeling uh on an unconstrained basis would be, you know, it says it really leads us to certain asset classes. Uh, what we've done is uh in, in, uh, in line with Wilshire and staff's expectations for markets, as well as uh recognition that we don't want to make draconian changes to asset allocations. As Dr. Hackbark mentioned, that's probably the, the most significant driver of performance for a portfolio over a period, period of time. Uh, we've looked to constrain the amount of change that we want to make in a portfolio. Uh, so we're coming back hopefully in, in January uh to a specially called meeting, answering some of the questions that the investment committee had specifically regarded to a couple of asset classes, presenting some material that shows how we approach investing in those asset classes, where we see the risks, uh, how we manage those risks and, and what our views are on the expectation um going forward. But I think that the biggest takeaway uh from that asset liability and asset allocation work is, is Dr. Hackbark mentioned in his memo is, um, you know, the opportunity currently relative to where we were. If we look back to three years ago when we were doing asset allocation work, and this wasn't unique to C E R S, but it was across the public pension uh, uh, market. You saw a lot of people reaching for um, you know, additional alpha, additional uh beta in their portfolio from uh growth assets in order to achieve those assumed rates of return. Uh, we were not um unique in increasing our allocation to public equities at the time. And that's proven uh done very well for the portfolios. But we, with current opportunity in front of us is we can achieve expected similar returns with a risk profile that is materially below the current allocation. So that's what we hope to be able to achieve going forward. Happy to answer any questions?
Well, Steve, thank you for your, for your report on the quarterly update. Thank goodness for the second quarter of this fiscal year. That was a kind of raised spirits.
Keep our fingers crossed, we can, uh, you know, December will be a repeat of November. That would be fantastic.
Certainly demonstrates the volatility that we're having to deal with in the last couple of years and certainly makes portfolio management much more challenging. And, and you and the staff have done an excellent job. We appreciate all the hard work that you put into that and keeping the investment committee of, aware of transactions that you're undertaking, as well as your ideas about ways and means to continue to improve our investment performance.
Appreciate that. It certainly has been, you know, volatility and uncertainty lead to challenging markets. But uh, we viewed it as an opportunity. Uh, we look at it as an opportunity to position the portfolio for uh the best results going forward. So hope, hope to be able to do that. Thank you.
So we're going to spend some more time talking about the initial report on the reallocation or do we want to leave that until January after the committee is? Or do we want to leave that until January after the committee has completed deliberations? That might be preferred. Is that what you would suggest?
That would be what I suggest. If there's any specific questions on it, I think that, happy to answer it, but given that the investment committee has made some requests of Wilshire and staff, both from an education standpoint, as well as to sharpen our pencils on a number of things, I'd like to circle back once we've had another opportunity to present to the investment committee.
I think it makes a lot of sense, and therefore that concludes the report from the investment committee.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hackford and Mr. Willer. Appreciate all the hard work from that area. Sherry, if you could take us to the proposed recurring meeting schedule calendar, which is on page 413. All right, what we decided to do at our November meeting was to adopt a calendar. Since we have not revised the bylaws, the bylaws call for us to adopt a calendar for each year prior to the end of December. So in the middle column of this schedule, I have provided the specific dates in 2024. There are two changes. One is in September. We needed to have the board meeting earlier than it was on the list last time because the staff needs to get to printing annual renewal documents. The only disadvantage to having the board meeting on the second Monday to match all the other meetings is that you'll have less than a week to review those recommendations from retiree health. I did not look at changing the current schedule used by retiree healthcare committee because that is a joint committee with KRS, and I'll leave that to that committee if they want to go to a recurring schedule. We can come back and modify as necessary. And then, as I mentioned in, at our last meeting, the December meeting of the board needs to be on the first Monday, which in 2024 will be December the 2nd, so that we can assist staff with making the December 6 deadline for sending financial statements to the Finance and Administration Cabinet. If there are no questions on this middle column of 2024, I will entertain a motion to adopt these dates for the 2024 CERS meeting calendar.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cheatham. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have adopted the 2024 meeting calendar. At this time, I'll turn it over to our CEO for any additional comments. He has on projects that are in motion. Mr. Owens?
Thank you, Betty. I can be relatively brief here. For the December CEO report, I believe that going forward, it will look very similar to this report. So that what I've done here is recap the committee meetings, because this quarter, there are very significant decisions that are made by the board, and I wanted every trustee to have in one place a recap, a synopsis of some of the work that had been done by all of the committees. So that really comprises the CEO report. Sherry, if you move forward to the trustee training. As I had indicated previously, every quarter, one page back, Sherry, if you would, every quarter, we will list in the board book exactly where trustees are in relation to their training schedule, how much time we have left for that, and then finally, Sherry, the next page, I've listed three or four opportunities for training that trustees might avail themselves of going forward. And with that, Betty, I'll turn it back to you.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Willer and I are working on an investment training session for two hours, and we're going to chat tomorrow about whether or not we're going to put that training on in December or January, so I'll be contacting trustees as soon as I can to let you know what that schedule might be. All right, thank you, Mr. Owens. Mr. Eager, do you have anything to add to your written report?
I don't. If people have suggestions of the areas they want more information, or anybody individually wants to follow up with me, I'm happy to talk to them.
Thank you very much. With that, I will now entertain a motion to go into closed session for litigation.
Eddie, can I ask a question?
Oh, sure, go ahead. My bad.
I was reading through your report. Could you give us a little bit more depth on your request with regard to a bill to allow office rental space in Louisville?
Yeah, sure. Right now, we have to go through the Finance Cabinet, real properties, and we have just had difficulties over the years. They're understaffed, they admit it, they're not, they've not been able to be, I'm not being critical of anybody there, but they're just terribly understaffed, and in order to, us to shortcut that system, we need legislative support to do so, and we have it. We have a bill sponsor, and I don't think there's going to be, I don't think there's going to be any particular issue. Rebecca, you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that's a pretty good summary of where we are.
Is legislation specific to space in Louisville?
It's specific to investment office space. I think the understanding is it will be Louisville.
Okay, is there a reason that, you know, we're not looking in Lexington?
Currently, all, one of the staff live there. We believe it's easier to recruit there. It facilitates meetings with investment managers and consultants that have easier time flying into Louisville than they do Lexington.
I understand your point. I would debate some of those points, not the least of which is recruitment issues, but I was looking at your fifth item in your report with regard to incident response planning activities. You know, it would seem to me, from what I've seen in the industry anyway, having a backup site would be beneficial. So we never entertained the idea of having office space in two locations. Investment office in two locations.
An investment office in two locations?
Yeah.
I'm not sure I've seen the need for it. If you could help me understand better the backup issue we're talking about, Rebecca, I don't even weigh in on that.
Our previous, the Louisville lease that we broke because of the construction issues that were never able to be resolved, so we broke that lease effective June of 2023, but our team had not been in those offices since December 24 of 2022. So that's how long we've been working on doing that. That space was significant enough and was purchased, not only for, not purchased, was the lease began in 2018, not only for investment staff, but also as an off-site for disasters. Subsequent to that was COVID, laptops, regular work-from-home routines. Those really now are substitutes for disaster recovery and offsites, including phones. Phones was the only place we had ever used. We've had a Louisville off-site for disaster for 20-plus years, way before we had the one that we purchased and that we leased in 2018. The only time we've ever used it for real life was a phone issue, but again, phones are addressed with our work from home and in the laptops. So the only thing we will need the investment site for will be imaging and correspondence. So there'll be a printer and a place to image. So that's a small imaging machine and a printer. Does that answer your question, Mr. Cheatham?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Mr. Eager? All right, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for litigation.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Do I have a second? A second. Thank you, Dr. Carver. All those in favor of going to closed session for litigation purposes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion having been made in open session to move into closed session for a specific purpose, and such motion having carried by a majority vote in open public session, the board shall now enter closed session to consider litigation pursuant to KRS 61.8101C because of the necessity of protecting the confidentiality of the system's litigation strategy and preserving any available attorney-client privilege. And with that, Philip, would you take us off?